Call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, June 16th, 2014. Would you all please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we roll into the summer seasons, we are ever mindful of the many responsibilities that rests on the city of Batavia. And we just ask for blessings and guidance on all of our employees and those who represent us, that we are fulfilling our mission and doing what is best for the Batavia community. Tonight, given the troubling context of world affairs and events, we want to offer a special blessing from those from our community and from throughout the United States of America who are serving so honorably in the services of the United States Armed Forces. We just ask that a special guidance and blessing be shown upon each and every one of them as they perform their duties that are assigned to them. We are ever mindful that this is a very, very dangerous world and that things are seemingly becoming more and more troubled, and we just ask that special blessings be showered upon them. Tonight, we always ask for a special guidance as we act on the matters of business before the City Council, knowing that each and every member of the City Council is here doing their very best to serve from their hearts and minds what is in the best interest of the community of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman McFadden, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, for a roll call.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
ATAC.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf is absent. Sparks.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Homan.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Vassiliyan.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the City Council are present and accounted for this evening's meetings, so we obviously have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of Governmental Services, do you have anything?
Thank you, Your Honor. No, I have no changes.
Anybody on the council? Okay, moving then to item number five, which is for presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Again, Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of Governmental Services Committee, would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. The consent agenda is as follows: To accept and place on file: A) The Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals minutes for April 23rd, 2014; B) The Joint Committee of the Home Minutes for April 15th, April 22nd, April 29th, May 20th, and May 27th, 2014; C) The Building Report for May 2014; D) The June 6th, 2014 payroll, the amount of $742,864.28; E) The accounts payable check register, the amount of $1,631,609.83; F) The City Council Minutes for May 19th, 2014; G) The approval to appoint; appointment of Deputy City Clerk; H) Ordinance 14-36, amend the text of the zoning code, Chapter 4.4, sign regulations; I) Resolution 14-78-R, authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement with the Batavia School District for safe routes to school improvements at AGS, HC Storm, and Rotolo Middle School; J) Resolution 14-72-R, the surplus property. I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Move, Alderman Sparks. Second, Alderman Stark, for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving then, at 7:35, which I guess we are there, we have a scheduled public hearing for an annexation agreement for 834 Main Street. So, convening a public hearing. Alderman Brown, do you have anything on this one?
A few comments, Your Honor. This is also going to be on the agenda, a little further down under Ordinance 1433 and 1434. This property is at 834 Main Street. It has been vacant for quite some time, and it's in the county. And in fact, there's quite a few areas right over there that are kind of what we call the pocket spots there. And the property has since been purchased and it is occupied, and our utilities had been turned off to it when it was vacated. So, one of the agreements that was made with the property owner as they came in was if they would annex into the city of Batavia voluntarily, and they agreed to do so, so that's why it's going to be in front of us here tonight. This was discussed at the J-Cow. There is no downside to it whatsoever, there's only positives. One of the things that we talked about was code enforcement. Over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of complaints from the neighbors and surrounding people about the care of the property, but there was absolutely nothing that the city could do. A) It was vacated, and secondly, it wasn't in the city of Batavia, so we had no jurisdiction. As far as police and fire, well, fire, it was under their authority, but as far as police, it was under the county authority, so if there was ever a police call, it was, you know, who could get there first, and that got turned over to the county. So, bringing this back into the, or bringing this into the city of Batavia is just a good thing for everybody involved, and that's why it's in front of us here tonight for a public hearing.
All right, very good. This is a public hearing. Does anybody in the audience wish to address this subject tonight of the annexation of the, of 834 Main Street? Anybody on the City Council have any questions? Alderman Brown, did entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing then?
So, move.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien, to adjourn the public hearing for the annexation agreement for 834 Main Street. Clerk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion for the adjournment of the public hearing is approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wishes to address this evening, matters not on the agenda? Okay. Moving right along then to item number eight, which is the Main Street Minute. Mr. Madder.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Madder, and I'm a board member on Batavia Main Street. And I'm pleased to say that we had eighty-four Main Street volunteers who donated 228 hours of planning, meetings, and programs, and events, all in May. As part of our ongoing retention meetings, Main Street met with two businesses in May to learn about their business and how we can help them grow. Thank you to those who were able to make it out to our farmer's market kickoff on Saturday, June 7th. Hundreds of people came out to shop on River Street for fresh produce and artisan goods. Gaetano's was there, Gaetano himself, he was there, and he was doing a wonderful cooking demonstration with foods that you can get at the farmer's market. Pretty cool. Demonstrations are going to be a weekly occurrence, so come on out, learn something new, hopefully, and taste some good food. Looking ahead, this week alone, this is just for this week. We have all this stuff this week. Wednesday, June 18th, Illinois Main Street would like to host part of their Regional Directors Retreat right here in Batavia from about 3:30 to 9:00 p.m. We invite all of you to attend this event at some point in the schedule to meet other directors, learn about their communities, and to teach them about what Batavia does around the theme of creative economy. Then, on Thursday, June 19th, from 6:00 to 10:00, the Artisan Collective will pop up on River Street with local handmade items. Anybody been? Jamie, I know you've been there.
Yes, I have.
Yeah, it's a good time. It's a lot of fun. Great stuff. If you haven't been, please go. And then, ta-da! Our second Music Matters Summer Concert Series is happening on June 20th. Thanks to everybody that made it out to the first one. Midnight, they were awesome, right? Absolutely. But we've got a great band this coming Friday. It's Heartache Tonight. They are an Eagles tribute band. Eddie Money said, "I closed my eyes and I thought I was listening to the Eagles." So, if Eddie Money's saying it, come on. Right? Okay. Another cool thing on Friday, the 20th, we've got the First Downtown Dance Swing at Shannon Hall in the East Side Community Center, featuring Lessons at 7:30 and music by the Flat Cats at 8:30. Saturday, June 21st, at 8:00 a.m., Batavia Farmer's Market with demonstration by Gaetano at 10:00 a.m. And then, the Fourth of July, community band performance, car show on Houston Street, and the annual Fourth of July fireworks. So, as usual, we're so thankful to have such a talented community sharing all of your efforts with us, Batavia Main Street. If you're someone that would like to come and volunteer with Batavia Main Street, or just get involved or know more about what we do, please contact us at (630) 761-3528 or www.downtownbatavia.com. Thank you. Any questions?
All right. We'll see you Friday night. All right, thank you. Okay, item number nine is the Chamber of Commerce. Jan McGree.
I'd like to begin first.
Heidi.
Hello, thank you for giving the Batavia Chamber a couple of minutes to speak with you today. I am here representing 285 members of the Batavia Chamber, fifteen members of our Board of Directors, and a huge two-person staff. We are in business for business in Batavia, and we hope to be great representatives of those businesses. We are offering a lot to many different types of members. We have from restaurants, retail, manufacturing, you name it. Those 285 members represent many, many different industries in our area, especially non-for-profits. One thing that I would like to suggest to all of you, and this is something that I've learned in the four months that I have been the Executive Director, is there are so many stories behind the businesses that are in Batavia. I encourage each of you and residents of the city of Batavia to become a regular somewhere, whether that be at a restaurant, or a retail shop, anything that you can, especially a service provider. If you can become a regular of that business, you will learn so much more, you will become connected to them, and it will change you and how you view our community and support for those small businesses. So, I encourage each of you to do that. We do have a couple of events coming up. To celebrate the early opening of Windmill City Fest this year, they are opening on Thursday night instead of the usual Friday, we will be holding a Chamber Mixer on June 20th, the Thursday night of the festival. Here, there will be a band playing in the Peg Bon Center, and the Beer Garden will be open, so please join us, rub elbows with a few of the many members of our Chamber, and learn a little bit more about their businesses. Again, you will become connected to them as I have in my short time here. I also would like to welcome you all to a Legislative Affairs Committee meeting that we are having, that we're going to be focusing on the city specifically, at 7:30 a.m. on June 20th in the back meeting room of Panera. Be a good opportunity for you, again, to see what we're trying to find out, what that committee is learning about local government, national, and also state governments. So, I encourage you to do that. One thing I've also learned in my short time as the Executive Director is how awesome it is to work with the city of Batavia. And I wanted to commend some people specifically for their help and assistance in welcoming me as the Executive Director. Mayor, you have been wonderful to work with. You are always there for us, whether it be a ribbon cutting, or just some advice on things that we can do to help a small business in Batavia. You're always there for us, and I really appreciate that. Bill McGrath has been amazing to us in so many ways, speaking specifically about economic development and what the city and the Chamber and Main Street can do together to try to make this community even better. And at many ribbon cuttings, Jamie Sam has been a gracious volunteer for us, attending as an alderman for the city, but also as my chief photographer for many of the ribbon cuttings. So, thank you, Jamie, for helping us. We are in the process of getting our, some more board members open and available to some of the ribbon cuttings, but she's been doing a great job. So, I am very thankful for the relationship that the city has with the Chamber, and I look forward to growing that and us working even in closer partnership to grow both economic development and our local businesses here in Batavia. Any questions for me before I pass it on to an awesome business owner?
I would just make, offer the opinion that certainly your ascension to Executive Director of the Chamber has been a very positive experience for the city of Batavia, and I thank you for all the energy and creativity and insights that you bring to the position, and we look forward to a long and fruitful working relationship with you and your Executive Directorship with the Chamber, so thank you for all you've done so far.
Well, thanks. I haven't broken anything yet, maybe the copier and the fax machine, but relationships are remaining strong, so we're going to try to keep moving forward with that. But thank you. I would like to now introduce you to one of our newest members of the Chamber. Her name is Jan McGree, and she is here as the Director of Operations for Image Pro Services and Supplies located at 24 North Batavia Avenue here in Batavia, Illinois. Jan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to hear that Holly broke her copier, because that's what we're in the business of. We repair printers and copiers, so I think Holly's going to be my first customer. As Holly said, I'm the Director of Operations at Image Pro. We've been in business since 1997. We're a family-owned business. My son is one of the certified technicians, and my husband thinks he runs the company, but we all know who really does. We provide same-day and next-day service for most printers, copiers, and office machinery. Like I said, our technicians are certified, and they do have ongoing training to keep up with the latest technology. We also provide original and compatible toner cartridges for Hewlett-Packard, Xerox, Brother, all different types of office machinery. All of our cartridges come with a guarantee. Basically, if it doesn't work, we'll get you a new one and make sure it works for you. We guarantee it. In addition, we also offer over 26,000 office supplies, you know, papers, pens, anything you need to run your business smoothly. We can offer that. Sometimes it's same-day, sometimes it's next-day delivery, depending on what you need. We're very excited to be new members of the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, even though we've been in Batavia for 20 years. We live here, our children go to school here. We're very excited to partner with the businesses in Batavia. We want to be their one source for all things business-related. We believe in an old-fashioned type of business relationship, where you talk to a live human being, if you call, you're going to talk to me, so you know who you're dealing with. You don't have to press two for, you know, to get to a live human being. And we're looking forward to really partnering with everyone in Batavia to be their one source for business supplies and service. We are open 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Our website is www/imagesproservices.com, or you can find us on the Batavia Chamber of Commerce website, or on the Batavia Main Street website. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number 10 on our agenda, which is the reappointment of Ed Weiss as to be a member of the Batavia Plan Commission. I believe you've all got a memo on my reappointment of Ed. Would somebody care to make a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark, for the approving the reappointment of Ed Weiss to be a member of the Batavia Plan Commission. Any discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanset.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Homan.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to item number 11. This is always one of our highlights of the year, because this is kind of the result of what has truly turned into one of the grand moments of Batavia during the course of a year, and that's when we host the Batavia Loyalty Day Parade under the sponsorship of our VFW Post 1197. Yvonne, you're the one that always talks to me. Are you doing this, or is somebody else from the?
Carl.
Carl. The podium is yours, so. Mr. Dinwiddie.
I hope this is wireless. It is. Okay. Good evening. I'm Carl Dinwiddie, citizen in Batavia and member of the Batavia VFW. As the mayor said, this is a very exciting evening, and tonight, we're going to honor the award winners of the parade. We had over 100 units in the parade this year, very stiff competition. We will have the, have a mayor's award, and then, we will be passing out awards in five different categories: youth, bands, military, adult, and commercial. And I'd like to start with, I guess introduce the other members of the committee. We have Yvonne, as you know, Yvonne Dinwiddie. We have Andy Frankie, who is not only our parade committee chairman, he's our new post commander, and we have Kathy, who was a important member of the committee. And with that, Mayor, if you would come up here as, while you're coming, this parade is a cooperative effort between the Batavia VFW and the city and other people in town. It would not be possible without the help of the city, so tonight, we have awards for the city of Batavia, certificate of appreciation for volunteer service and support from, of course, the Fire Department, the Police Department, Public Works, and any other city employee who helped out with the parade.
Certainly. ESDA has to be in there, too.
ESDA? ESDA, too? Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And next, we'll just go right in, because we're short on time, right into the mayor's award, which...
I'd like you to hold the mic.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And do you want to announce?
I don't know if we, I pick, they always ask me to pick somebody, something in the parade that I'm resonating to, and this year, I certainly resonated very strongly to the Batavia High School Marching Bulldogs. Do we have somebody from the band here tonight?
Well, I don't mean to put anybody aside.
Let me just say, I'll certainly make sure they get the award, but I really appreciate all the sparkle and excitement that the band annually brings to the parade, and it certainly is truly one of the highlights. And I know there are literally probably now thousands of Batavia residents who are former members of the band, who have the memories of over the past, what's this, 30 years we've been doing this? Forty. Over the many years that the parade has been held, and I think of the thousands of people that have walked down the streets representing the Batavia High School Band, I think it is really one of the starring attractions of this community, not only in this parade, but in many events. And I'm so thankful that we have such a talented group in our community, so hopefully, we can give them this, and they can...
That's their award.
We have an official Bulldog statue to give them, so. So, that's my part in this, I think, all right? Thank you.
And Holly, if you would come up for a moment? As I said, there's many people involved with this parade, and we have a certificate for you, Holly, personally, for volunteer service and support. Don't run away. You were instrumental in having many members of the Rotary. Excuse me, you're instrumental in having many members of the Rotary come out and help us, and here's certificates and photos for the Rotary. Okay, we'll get on to the actual awards. I did want to show everyone, all the recipients will receive a nice plaque with a engraving on the bottom of their place in the award, I mean, in the parade, and what they won. And so, in the First Division Youth, we actually had a tie for first place. I think this is the first time, a three-way tie. So, if representatives from the Batavia Bulldogs Champion Football Team, and Prairie Gymnastics, and Batavia High School Robotics Team would come forward. We had a tie for first place between the Navy Band Great Wakes and Batavia High School Okay, in military units, first place was the Marine Color Guard. Second place in military was the VFW Ladies Auxiliary, 19th District, which is our district here. And for military, we had a third-place tie with the VFW Post 11018 in Bartlett, and VFW Post 7539 in Bloomingdale. In the commercial category, first place, Batavia Academy of Dance. Second place in commercial, Funway Family Entertainment Center. And last but not least, a very special award for our committee president and co-chair, Kathy and Andy Frankie.
I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the parade. Without the city's help and all the parade participants, it wouldn't be nearly as much fun as it was. I sincerely hope everybody can come out again next year. It's the first Sunday in May. I believe it's going to be May 3rd this year.
Well, certainly, let me say, on behalf of this community and the City Council, that is, I began this with, we really owe a deep-seated sentiment of gratitude to the Batavia VFW Post 1197 and its Ladies Auxiliary, who for 40 years have kept this going, and it keeps getting bigger and better as time marches forward. So I sincerely thank you for not only all the memories you've made, but all the commitment toward patriotism and keeping very much alive and well in the community of Batavia the spirit of patriotism and all that it means and the sanctity of the United States of America. So I really appreciate the, kind of, the hometown touch that you bring to it and the sentiments that shower upon our community because of the good work of this parade and all the sentiments that flow from it, that people take home with them, and that they understand probably clearer what it really, truly means to be an American citizen, and how great and grand a life we enjoy in this country when you compare us to so many others. So I really, again, thank the VFW for doing it. Before we close, I'd like to ask if there's somebody from the Robotics Club that could maybe come up and explain to us what the device is in front of the council here, and maybe demonstrate it for us, or show us what's going on. This is a group that really has kind of taken on quite a very visible presence in our town, and is somebody who really has done some exciting things. And so I'd like to have you maybe talk a little bit about this for a second or two. Tell us who you are, Soli.
I'm Alex Seigre, I'm a first-year member of the team. And I'm, I just don't click. So what this, the game this year was to pick up 24-inch diameter balls and shoot them through a, either a high goal or a low goal. So what our robot does is the front contraption there picks up the ball and loads it, and Eric can demonstrate that. The ball. Then picks up the ball and then loads it into our catapult, which isn't currently... There we go. And then we line up...
I don't like that face on me.
And shoot. And the goal is five feet minimum, five, six. Oh, it shoots higher than we have ceiling clearance. Fortunately, we could not bring a ball tonight. Oh, so our drivetrain is called a horizontal drive. It basically allows us to go any direction. So we have three, three sets of omnidirectional wheels. And so, as Eric has said, it goes in any direction and turn, watch on a dime. And use a three-speed donuts.
and the technology that you have obviously collaboratively put together to produce that. But I think the real exciting thing for me is to look at the age of the members of the robotics team and think about, you know, if you can do this, what you've already done here, what you may do for us as a society and a world in the decades ahead, and the age of you, and the talents, and the ingenuity, and the wisdom, and the creativity that you're bringing to this process already, I think you really offer to the world of the future some very exciting avenues of advancement in the days ahead. And so I really am very pleased and honored that you came down tonight and not only won your award in the parade, but demonstrated to us, you know, the creativity that exists in our world today amongst the younger generation. So I thank you all for coming down and showing that and sharing that with us, and just the excitement that you guys are going to be around here for many, many years to come, I think is something that the world can look forward to with great anticipation for some real advancements in the service and the wisdom and the development of mankind in the days ahead. So again, thank you on behalf of the community of Batavia for really an outstanding job. I think that kind of concludes the parade activity, so I'm fearful we're going to lose most of our audience now. Government is here and has to function, so we will be continuing with our meeting, but thank you all for coming down. Okay, for the City Council, we'll move then forward to item number 12, which is...
Mayor.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for telling me that. I didn't realize he was standing there. Okay, moving to item number 12, which is ordinance 14-33, approving the annexation agreement for 834 Main Street. Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. This property was the subject of the public hearing. I touched briefly on it. It is a island in the unincorporated area, at which time, in 1996, the utilities were hooked up to the property, and in 2011, the property went into foreclosure. And the property, as I mentioned, has been recently purchased, and they've agreed to go into an annexation agreement with this. So that's what this ordinance is about. It was discussed at J-Cow, recommended for approval by the J-Cow to the City Council. So I move for approval of ordinance 14-33.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Holman for the approval of ordinance 14-33. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye. Okay, ordinance number 14-33 is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent, which then leads us to item number 13 on the agenda, which is ordinance 14-34, annexing the property at 834 Main Street. Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you mentioned, this is actually the ordinance that does annex it, so I move for approval of ordinance 14-34.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Holman again, for the approval of ordinance 18-34, annexing the property at 834 Main Street. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye. Ordinance 18-34 is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving then to item number 14, which is approval of a waiver of formal bidding of resolution 14-74-R. And this is Alderman Stark, or...
Actually, Alderman Wolf ran the meeting tonight.
Wolf, okay. O'Brien, then, do you have...
I guess so. Well, this is a resolution, two motions to it. The LiveScan electronic fingerprint machine has kind of lived its useful life. We're looking to replace it. It's in the budget. They're looking, they got two bids for that interface, one machine, one bid that they got interfaces with St. Charles, the other interfaces with Geneva. They recommend, staff recommends that we go with the Crossmatch that is just, what is it, about 39 cents or 38 cents below our budget number. And the reason they only went with the two bids was to, because of the interface with what we have. I guess there's also a mandate that we had to have a machine that does more, a state mandate that does more with fingerprinting and palm control, so that's another reason why we're replacing this old machine. The first motion would be to, would be to, give me one moment, please. First motion would be to waive formal bidding. So I would make a motion to waive formal bidding for resolution 14-74-R.
Second. Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman McFadden to waive formal bidding on ordinance 14-74-R. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of resolution 14-74-R, authorizing purchase of the LiveScan fingerprint machine. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye. Motion for the approval of resolution 14-74-R is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Okay, moving to item number 16, which is approval of the July 4th, 4th of July fireworks permit. Who's got this? Should be probably Wolf.
Okay. Alderman... Oh, is it me again?
You, you again.
Okay. I make a motion that we pass the authorization of firework permit for the Batavia Fireworks Committee in care of Mark Davis at the June, in care of Mark Davis. I make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by ALM, ATAC, for the approval of the council to authorize the approval of a 4th of July fireworks permit in the city of Batavia. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chanzet.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the fireworks permit is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to item number 17, which is approval of a Class F liquor license for the Batavia Park District for the Windmill City Fest Beer Tent, and further for a waiver of that fee. I guess Alderman O'Brien, you get this one, too?
Me again. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to, to pass the authorization of a Class F liquor license for the Batavia Park District Windmill City Fest Beer Tent and waive the fee.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by ALM, Stark, for the approval of the Class F license for the Batavia Park District for Windmill City Fest and a waiver of the fee. Any discussion?
Aye.
Vassiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
Motion for the waiver of bidding is approved. Thirteen yes, or, excuse me, thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Alderman O'Brien?
The second motion would be the passage of resolution 14-74-R, authorizing purchase of a LifeScan fingerprint machine that is a cost of $26,999.72 from Crossmatch 500P I make that motion.
Second. Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of item 15 on the agenda, which is resolution 14-74-R, authorizing purchase of the LifeScan fingerprint machine. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the fireworks permit is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to item number 16, which is approval of the July 4th, 4th of July fireworks permit. Who's got this? Should be probably Wolf.
Okay. Alderman... Oh, is it me again?
You again.
Okay. I make a motion that we pass the authorization of firework permit for the Batavia Fireworks Committee in care of Mark Davis at the June, in care of Mark Davis. I make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman ATAC for the approval of the council to authorize the approval of a 4th of July fireworks permit in the city of Batavia. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
Motion for the approval of the fireworks permit is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to item number 17, which is approval of a Class F liquor license for the Batavia Park District for the Windmill City Fest Beer Tent, and further for a waiver of that fee. I guess Alderman O'Brien, you get this one too?
Me again. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to pass the authorization of a Class F liquor license for the Batavia Park District Windmill City Fest Beer Tent and waive the fee.
Second.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the Class F license for the Batavia Park District for Windmill City Fest and a waiver of the fee. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vassiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
ATAC.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
Motion for the waiver of bidding is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Moving to item number 19, which is the administrator's report. Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. We got word today that the state has approved the Safe House to School project plans. There was some delay with that approval, but they are going to start, and Engineering Department says that all those projects that take place near the schools will be done by the time school is in the fall. If you notice, they started putting in the bases, the base for the patches on Houston Street today, attaching from Island to the route that Batavia Avenue will be published in the next two or three days, whether permitting. And really want to mention our appreciation to the patience that citizens, the businesses, walkers, bikers, what have you, had as it went through the project. I think actually the project went very smooth over the last couple of weeks. I think we had some gravel, made it more difficult for a lot of people, but we appreciate it. It's a really important project, and I think we can, you can tell that it certainly saved us a lot of time in terms of the Houston Street, the streetscape project for next year, so I think we can go in that calm manner. We had some trees on River Street that didn't survive the winter. Those were placed last week. Illinois Main Street is having an annual meeting of all its directors of Algen, and as part of that, there's going to be a trip down to Batavia for directors to come down and observe our downtown. They're going to have several speakers, including the mayor, about the process of development of the downtown and highlighting the Water Speed Studios. And that's, I just wondered if the mayor would say something, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge on behalf of the staff, Mike Buffington, who is the superintendent of the city of New York, passed away last week. And Mike is a very good guy, and I wanted to say that on behalf of the staff. That's all I have.
Any questions, the administrator? Thank you.
One question of Walgreens, is there still an extension of time on that to get underway?
We're in a 60-day extension. While they review the results in soil borings that they did on the city factory, the results came in maybe a week or so before the first deadline. Really wasn't enough time, because there is some contamination. We got our consultant in immediately, assures us that there's nothing, nothing that should be an obstacle towards the deal, but it's fair to give them the time to really take a look at it. It may result in them wanting to do more borings to get a better idea of what it is, but frankly, they believe that it's really not maybe been naturally occurring in some of the fill as opposed to a certain house spill or anything. It wasn't destined to happen.
Well, I guess my concern is that, you know, 60 days is two months, and we keep pushing it back, and the businesses in that center are going to be negatively affected, obviously, when construction starts. In the summertime at least, you know, weather permits more activity and faster construction process. And if we push it off and we start running into inclement weather, it just prolongs the agony. And that's just a concern I have, is that, you know, we get this thing rolling. I mean, 60 days is a long time to wait for boil samples, boring samples. So it just, that's my concern, is just the businesses that they're at risk. And so I would say with that, that we all participate and we all, the whole city would shop at that center and, you know, eat at Daddy O's, and I just, I worry about the businesses.
I'll have to interrupt.
Thank you.
Okay, golden committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown.
The meetings do announce tonight, Your Honor. J-COW tomorrow night starts at 7:30. Couple items that CDC has is the recommendation from staff on the Tomley Building, which last I knew was still going to be that we entertain the idea of turning it back into an incubator. Another item on the agenda, Chris Aston is going to give the committee an update on economic development. I had talked to him about this about a month ago, and we were going to try to get it on last week's agenda, and things just didn't allow that to happen. So he's going to be here tomorrow night to fill everybody in on what's been going on, who he's been talking to, and kind of the, just an update on economic development in downtown or in all of Batavia. Plan Commission is scheduled to meet June 18th, which is Wednesday night. On their agenda is the final Plata subdivision for Tanglewood Hills, Unit 5. They're going to be meeting at 7:30. And then Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet June 23rd, which is a Monday, at 5:30. So I have...
Public Utilities, Alderman Clark.
Nothing to report. There is a closed session on the agenda for tomorrow night's joint committee of the whole meeting, but I'm not sure if that will be pulled off or not. We'll find out tomorrow, so. Other than that, I have nothing to report for Public Utilities. Thank you.
City Services, Alderman O'Brien.
The only thing tomorrow night is discussing the Batavia Trolley. It's a trolley that was given to the city years ago, and talking about possibly transferring ownership of that to the Park District.
Government Services, Alderman Stark or Sparks?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have nothing to report, and there's nothing on the agenda for tomorrow.
Okay. All right, do we have other business from the City Council this evening? All right, anybody in the audience? Okay. Moving then to the mayor's report. As Bill McGrath indicated, we certainly want to express our heartfelt sympathy to Mike Buffington's family and to the city of Geneva on his loss. As I'm sure most of you have heard or read, he was killed in an auto accident last week at the ramp of coming up off of I-88 at Route 47 on the north end of Sugar Grove. And I guess there's still some question as to exactly what happened, but he was broadsided and killed. He was on his way home, as I'm understanding it, from a meeting regarding the Prairie State project, of which he has been serving as the chairman of the NIPA group that represents us, and this is a thing that they've passed around between Batavia, Rochelle, and Geneva, and it just happened to follow that, I believe that's a, Gary, that's a two-year term when you have that?
The officer.
Yeah, for two years. So he was in the process of, I think this was his second year of doing that, and had done quite a nice job, in my opinion. Needless to say, that's a very intensified and complicated subject to discuss and report back to the three city councils about, and hear all the issues that surround it. So he had, from everything I could see, he had most ably represented us on that discussion and in that council, and had certainly represented, in my opinion, the best interests of the community of Batavia. So his loss is one that is not going to be easy to accept or overcome, and I'm not sure yet what impacts that has on the whole Prairie State project from the NIPA perspective, but it certainly, I think, causes us to step back for a few moments and reflect about him and what his whole role was. So Mike is truly going to be missed, and again, we are very sorry to have to report that. And I, Bill, I guess we still don't know anything about any memorial services or funeral or anything about it, and so I'm not sure what to tell you on that. But again, our extreme sympathies to his family and to the city of Geneva on his loss, and he will be a hard person to replace. The other thing I wanted to just share with you, this past Friday, I spent almost the entire, I did spend the entire day in the city of Chicago down at Navy Pier, because we had a meeting of the entire body of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus to talk about various subjects in the region, and certainly one of them that was kind of alive and well now with all my fellow mayors was the, what is happening to the price of electrical rates in places outside that aren't impacted or aren't subject to Prairie State, but are being subjected to electric rates coming from other directions. And there's been some huge fundamental shifts in pricing here in the last several months, and many of my fellow peers as mayors in the region are kind of gulping twice and wondering what hit them and what happened with where these price increases in their electric are going to come. And appears from everything I heard, that that may not be over. There's, they just got one wallop on the 1st of June, and there may be some more coming before the year is over. So needless to say, the whole electrical aggregation movement, as they called it, which was the folks that went out and contracted with individual communities to sell them electricity at lower rates, that seems to have had some major setbacks, I guess I would describe it, from everything I'm hearing from our fellow mayors. So I don't know what this really does to our electrical situation. It certainly, I think, is going to bring a whole new pricing scale to electrical rates throughout the region, and I don't know, we're going to have to wait and see where Batavia lands in our pricing versus others, but the numbers, and I'm hesitant to publicly say some of the percentages I heard on Friday from some of my peers in the region of what they thought their towns were looking at, but they were significant electrical rate increases that are impacting the entire region. So that one's out there. Another one that kind of hits close to home to us is, is that we had a very extended discussion, because there's going to be a meeting tomorrow of the state's Administrative Review Committee on the whole subject of sales tax sourcing, as it applies to the state of Illinois. And we had Paul Burks, who's the deputy general counsel for the Illinois Department of Revenue, speak before us, and he was followed by Jordan Matches, who is the chief of staff of the RTA, and who has been leading the entire, I'll describe it as, sales tax investigation that's been going on in the region for the last several years. And among the things that the mayors were incited with was the fact that it would now appear that there are in excess of 100 businesses that have decided to remove their sales tax charging purposes from the six-county region, and have moved themselves out to some distant point in some hidden land county, specifically outside the RTA area, where they now charge all their sales tax regardless of where it's happening to that point, and then the community in which it's happening in gives them back some small portion, maybe 15 or 20 percent, and then the business itself gets given, or the community that's hosting this situation gets 15 or 20 percent, and the business itself takes back about 80 percent of the municipal sales tax that they are charging in cities. And as I think all of us know, we apparently have one or two businesses in the city of Batavia who are part of this situation, and, you know, it would appear that we are losing right now hundreds of thousands of dollars of municipal sales tax that is being charged inside the city of Batavia, but probably is going to some downstate community where it's being charged, and then rebated 80 percent of it back to the business at hand. So this whole thing led to a Illinois Supreme Court challenge, and a couple of months back, the Illinois Supreme Court ruled the whole process to be illegal and threw it out. And so now the Illinois Department of Revenue has been charged with creating a set of rules to kind of replace the ones that were broken. And tomorrow, there's what they call the J-COW, the Joint Administrative Review Committee of the Illinois General Assembly, of which I believe there are 18 members, are meeting in Chicago tomorrow to review the proposed rules and then make a final vote of determination as to whether or not they can employ them statewide. There's ongoing debate as to the value and the thoroughness of the rules, that there's some fear that the rules are written too loosely, and that there can be some ability for towns to continue to move out into other community, counties outside the six-county Chicago area and charge the sales tax, and then, or process all their sales tax, and then avoid paying any of the communities that are really doing the service their money. And so as a result of that, there's some dramatic impacts, and, you know, we're being hit significantly. The city of Chicago appears to be the victim of millions of dollars of lost revenue, specifically from the airline industry, where all the jet fuel that's being used in the two Chicago airports is being charged out in a community in DeKalb County. And that's just one example.[1686.00] And there's, there's some pretty high suspicion, and this may be going on with some of our bigger sales taxpayers in the city of Batavia right now, that they pay us, when you go into a store on Randall Road or downtown and you give them a check or a credit card or money and you buy the item there, that sales tax appears to come back to us in Batavia. But if you go into that store and say, oh gee, what you got here isn't available in this store. I'd like to order it online and then be able to come back to this store and pick it up. They go ahead and order it for you online, but then that online sales tax probably goes down to Cankey Key and it's charged down there and Batavia or any other town doesn't see that online sales tax coming out of stores in our town. So there's just a lot of different ways that this thing is being rubbed and worked. And it's, it is very problematic and very troubling. I can tell you, there was over a hundred mayors at the meeting and everybody left there kind of shaking their head in dismay when they kind of got a full dose of the reality of the picture of the thing. So I'm sure there's more to come on this as the days move forward, but tomorrow will be kind of a vital moment in this thing. Interestingly, one of the votes on the J-CO is State Representative Schmidt. And I had the opportunity to talk to him today and I'm very confident that he's going to vote the right way tomorrow on behalf of the best interests of Batavia and the rest of his constituents here. But we'll see where this whole thing flushes out. I'll have more to talk to you about as we go forward on this. But as I say, this was a heavy duty issue at the, last Friday at the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus in, in Chicago. And it, you know, it's from everybody from Mayor Emanuel on down to the smallest town out there that's got, maybe getting hit by a sales tax theft that's going on in their community. And it's, Illinois is going to have to, the Department of Revenue, I think, realizes they're going to have to tighten their rules up to get rid of the loopholes and allow these businesses to do this. And so we will see what we shall see. So that's enough to hear from me. Let's then move to item number twenty-two, which I guess is a motion for executive session for the purposes of purchase of sale of electrical power and collective bargaining. Somebody care to make that motion? Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien. The council entered executive session for that purpose. Kirk, call the roll?
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion for executive session is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Okay. We'll reconvene the city council in regular session. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Clark? Atack?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Homan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Vassiliyan?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Okay. And let the record reflect that all those who entered executive session have returned to regular session of the city council. We will move then to item number twenty-three, which is Resolution fourteen dash seventy-three dash R. Approve the IBW Local Number One Ninety-Six, two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen contract with the city of Batavia. So moved. Have a motion, we'll have a second?
Second.
Second for the approval of Resolution fourteen dash seventy-three dash R. The contract with IBW Local One Ninety-Six for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Any discussion? Alderman Clark, you have any comments as chairman of the committee about it or anything? Okay. Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution fourteen dash seventy-three dash R is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
No, your honor, before I entertain that motion, I'd like to make a couple of comments.
Certainly.
First of all, I'd like to just really publicly thank you for taking the charge that you have taken with this whole sales tax thing. I, I feel as though you've been very instrumental in working with the RTA and everybody else involved in this because I know it's very true and dear to your heart what's going on here in Batavia. So staying on top of it and keeping the council informed, I, I really appreciate that and thank you.
I was the one in there Friday, leading the conversation on behalf of the mayor's caucus. So they were crediting me with the one that stirred the whole mess up.
Well, I think you were the one that stirred the whole mess up. So that's why I'm publicly thanking you for doing that. Because as you, as you mentioned, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars a year that's coming out of the city coffers. And, and, and speaking of that, the next thing I just wanted to mention was how nice the town is looking. Between what's happened on River Street and Wilson Street and now what's going to happen on Houston Street and just all throughout the town, you know, Public Works has done a great job. The past city council for the last, I'll just say, ten years really, when we started talking about Streetscape and such, has made the commitment to spend the money, whether it be out of TIF or whether it be out of utilities because we're replacing the utilities and upgrading the whole system, or whether now it's out of general fund, you know, the maintenance now is coming out of the general fund. And, and just, you know, replacing the trees when they need to be replaced and, and getting the landscaping done and the benches and, you know, it's just all coming together. And, and it's been a big commitment on, on the committees that have been formed. And it's been a big commitment on the past city councils and it's a big commitment on this city council and the future city councils to continue with the needed funds in order to keep doing what we're doing. So I just wanted to thank everybody for doing that. And Gary, if you could, please pass that on to your crews also because they're the ones that make it happen. You know, we say, we say, let's spend the money and then they're, they're the ones that have to make it happen. So appreciate that.
Yeah, I was just, want to add to that, you know, this has been a ten or twelve year conversation that's going on amongst the city council. And, you know, there was a lot of far sighted visioning. I remember Linnea Miller was a big voice in favor of this and she never lived to see it ever happen. But, I mean, there was a lot of people that jumped in on this. And we had very little city council opposition to it when most people weren't quite sure what we were doing, but they thought we needed to do something and be creative. And as you all know, we've had a lot of debate and, and maybe some disagreement about how it was all going to happen and who did it and how we did it. But at the end of the day, it is starting to come together. And, you know, I've, when I, again, when I was at the mayor's caucus on Friday, I had several mayors in the region ask me if they could call me to come out and take a tour of it and maybe bring some of their city staff or councils out to see Batavia and see what we had done here. And specifically our treatments to the Fox River and, and how the bike trail worked with it. And it's interesting, the number of people that wander through our town on a somewhat regular basis, specifically using the bike trails. I had a member of Mayor Emanuel's staff tell me that she's out here two or three times a year just riding her bicycle through here with a group from Chicago and how impressed they were with what they were seeing happening in our town and how pedestrian and bicycle friendly we had become. And I thought, well, I get, some people tell me we aren't as pedestrian and bicycle friendly as we should be, but we have, and I have outsiders telling me they think we are. So we probably have some more work to do, but we are making headway. So it's good to see it all come together.
Yeah. And another I wanted to just make mention too was the park district because not only do I think they do a pretty nice job of taking care of the parks, but it took a couple of years of some conversation between you and I and I think Mike and Bill, and I'm not sure who all else with our new executive director to, with the park district, to get this area out here kind of cleaned up and brightened up and some flowers growing instead of being just a desert. And, and they've been working on that and so it's coming along real nice now too. So it's, it's all coming together. It's all coming together.
We still got some work to do. I'd really like to get a fine tuned management on the riverbanks.
I agree.
You know, specifically through the central part of the community that people look, stand on the Wilson Street Bridge and look north and south and really have a nice tapered riverbank for people to see. Because I think that would go a long way to help selling the image that we're trying to create here. And, you know, the other thing is, I will tell you that, you know, we continue to have people come in and nose around, kick the tire. I had quite a conversation with the Benedettos, who are our new restaurant folks moving into town about why they wanted, decided to move in here. And a lot of it had to do with the look of the downtown and the amenities that are being offered and put out there. So, I mean, this is starting to pay some benefit to us. And I'm just hopeful that as people look at River Street, the first block, that in the city councils of the future, we can carry forth the idea that, hey, we got ten more blocks up River Street that's got all River frontage on one side of the street, that, you know, that can be a tremendous redevelopment opportunity. And, you know, just keep extending north what we did in the first block. And there's some real opportunities there because much of the property is in a state where it could be easily redeveloped and created. So I think there could be some really nice opportunities in the next twenty, thirty years in Batavia as that area, people realize that. And hopefully now when they see the first block, they can see, understand what, hey, we can just keep going right up the street with this. And then when you get further up the street, you got more opportunities to open up the river than you probably did in that first block. So there's just a lot of, just the right people coming together at the right time, the right city officials here and we can make something, I think, really make us shine.
I almost wondered the other night, I think it was on a Friday night, if we were going to become the music capital of the world because I was walking around here and there was a band playing over here at the band show. Then you walk across the River Walk and Pail Joyce has got a group playing there. And then you go out from there and O-Solomayoe's got somebody out in front of there playing the guitar. And you go by O'Briens, or what used to be O'Briens, and there's a, there's a band playing at O'Briens. Then you go around the block because Foltus had their chop on the block thing and they got people out front there. It was just amazing.
Well, I mean, the new owners of O'Briens, I don't know what we're going to call that, but I think the name's going to get changed here pretty quick. She tells me she came here because of what she saw was happening on the street and liked what she saw and whatever. So there are new people showing up here because of it.
Move adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien for adjournment. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?